I have been notified that Mr. Manjares is recording. So I call to order the public budget hearing on proposed FY16 budget. And I believe that Mr. Mahoney is going to present the budget. Mr. Mahoney, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Will be using the jecter.
Yes, we're doing it.
Very good. And a special thank you to all the members from the district who are here to attend our budget meeting. Thank you. Mr. Mahoney.
Thank you very much. Good evening. There's a PowerPoint presentation that's available for you to follow along with what we're going to be presenting this evening. Just a couple of comments before we begin on the FY16 budget proposal. It was our goal starting out to have a very conservative budget proposal for fiscal 16. So at the bottom of the budget guidelines, we asked our budget managers and our staff to level fund more reviews of discretionary funds. And they delivered to the letter of that directive. They were very cooperative. All my discussions with people were very, very positive, very kind to attitude. It was very much team effort that we're presenting here this evening. So I want to publicly thank the staff as well as the administrative team for all their help and assistance putting us together. The budget process, once we put together our original proposal, we had a meeting on September 2nd with the finance subcommittee. We presented a budget that represented a 4.6 percent increase over fiscal 15. After some feedback from the finance subcommittee we met later on, I think in early January, to the proposal of about 1.6 percent over FY15. And based upon some additional adjustments, we're looking to increase the overall budget by 0.9 percent. There's some estimates in here relative to state aid. State aid won't be known. The governor's budget won't be known until the third week of February, so we're making some assumptions here. But at this point, our proposed FY16 budget is $19,831,000. Some of the budget impacts that we've included is part of putting together this proposal. It's the transition to the smaller school model, 628 target enrollment, and the implementation of the 16 programs under the educational program plan. We're also focused on operating our structural equipment, continuing to implement the ed plan. This year, we'd like to establish our OPEP trust, the other post-employment benefits liability, and we need to continue critical building repairs. As we look, as we prepare FY16, we've been looking forward to fiscal 17. Because as we've been talking about over the last year, we need to transition over multiple years. So we've got to continue to keep the goal on meeting that 628 enrollment target. We also have to make sure that we start to implement the new program plan by closing two programs, adding two programs, and setting to merge programs. Some of that may happen, merge stuff may start to happen in FY16 depending on enrollment. We need to continue our reduction in our overall enrollment, but focus on trying to increase the in-district enrollment rate. And as I said earlier, proceed with program closures. We do expect DESE in this week reviewing our educational program plan, and we'll be working with them to do so. It's important to note that as we move through this process, there will be cost implications. We've had a number of discussions in the past, primarily with the finance subcommittee, that with the decline in enrollment, there's not necessarily a correlation between that decline in enrollment and decline in decrease in expenses. Because you have to maintain those programs until such time as all the students work their way through the four years of the program. Here's a graphic illustration of the change in the enrollment since 2010, and here we're seeing in terms of our 10-year freshman enrollment. Some of the assumptions on the revenue plan, we basically level fund at chapter 70. The only increase we've implemented is a $10,000 increase based on 25 dollars per student increment as part of chapter 70 formula. Our regional transportation reimbursement, we're expecting an increase of $85,000. That's on the assumption of 60 percent state reimbursement. Right now, we're projecting the state reimbursement for fiscal 15 to be somewhere between 62 and 64 percent. However, as we've been reading in the paper, we're aware of situations at the state level as far as their budget deficit that they're dealing with. Under Governor Patrick's administration, regional transportation did take a cut in fiscal 15. It was scheduled to be at a reimbursement level somewhere around 90 percent. It's been dropped to 62 percent. So based on what we're planning on FY16, we're planning on a 60 percent reimbursement level. We've seen a decrease in the prior year, non-resident tuition of $548,000, based on the actual 15 enrollment that we have here that we build for this year. And we also expect FY16 tuition rates to be reduced as well by the commissioner pursuant to his indications that he is going to continue to lower the rate by 8 percent of the state foundation level. Right now, it's at 142 percent. It's getting to 134 percent. In terms of how this budget impacts assessment, because of the reduction on the revenue side, we expect the overall assessment increase to be at 6 percent. Based on guidance we received from DESE, we are no longer assessing our member districts for special education enrollment on a per pupil cost. But rather, we are spreading that cost as part of our operational assessments. However, for our non-residential communities, we will be billing them based on the prior year actual costs. We had a study done over the summer to align our methodology with what DESE expects. And based upon that calculation, we're going to be billing our FY15 sped costs to our out-of-district towns and cities at $4,500 a student. Other budget considerations, we factored in what we anticipate to be our collective bargaining agreement. We're still working through that. In terms of health insurance, we're projecting a 7 percent increase. We were initially projecting a 9.5 percent increase, but given more updated information, we feel comfortable enough to be lowering it to 7 percent. In terms of capital needs, we still need to continue with the building repairs and maintenance. And we also need to be sensitive to equipment needs, both instructional as well as for building maintenance and operations. Our school bus transportation contract expires at the end of this school year. I'll be issuing a request for proposals later this month. I'll be reporting those results to you. But we've incorporated factors to anticipate what that contract may come in at. Of course, it hadn't been competitively bid in five years. This is a five-year contract expiring. As mentioned earlier, we would like to, we're recommending a funding level of OPEP of $50,000 to initially start the trust so that we can start to fund it on an ongoing basis, similar to what we've been doing the last couple of years with our stabilization fund. Some of the things that we're doing for the implementation of the new education program plan for fiscal 16 is including two part-time positions that we'd be looking to fill in the spring of next year for advanced manufacturing and for the multimedia engineering. The thought is if we can get folks on board in the spring of next year, they can stop doing the groundwork development originally and put together the necessary components to the plan that allow us to pull that out of fiscal 17. And again, as I said, DESE will be reviewing the plan, and we expect to maybe making other staff, staffing decisions that may be guided by involvement. As far as professional development, we continue some of the initiatives we're doing with research for better teaching, and also more technology utilization. The other ballpoint we've added this year is the strategic marketing and recruitment and retention of students in the district area. Here we call Dr. McCullough, issued a report to the school committee last month on that initiative, and that will remain key as we move forward into fiscal 16. So that professional development has already begun with staff this fiscal year. We look at student testing and math. We're still seeing some of the students that are coming in below grade level. We see most recently 53 percent at least below grade level for the class of 18. Even though we have less students, we're still seeing a high percent of students that are coming in below grade level. Some of the challenges we have to deal with in math. However, by funding the additional math teacher in the FY15 budget, we have seen some of our class sections go down and lower teacher-student ratios. We've seen the class sizes drop. In reading, we see 50 percent of our grade nine students exceeded their first quarter goals, which is much higher than what we typically expect to see. In fiscal 15, we funded 8.5 instructional technology specialists to help with special education students from the use of technology. In this budget, we're recommending that we fund that to a full-time position. In terms of special education, we're going to continue the initiatives that we're funding in the FY15 budget. No change there. Hospitalization, out-of-district interim placements, and some of the student transition process and planning. That gives us a jump so that when the students come in, the special education department's better prepared. When we look at enrollment in special education, again, we see that what we see in our most recent October homecoming is still in the high end, or the highest in five years actually for special education enrollment. In our CTE area, we're looking, we've reduced our staffing by 1.5 FTE. Those cuts were implemented in fiscal 15. So we've been operating with those cuts in place this school year so far. We're also transferring two and a half staff from the Perkins Grant. We've been routinely funding staff out of the Perkins Grant. And what we've been trying to do is gradually move those salary costs out of Perkins so that we can better utilize that grant as a, to fund the structural of the equipment so that moving forward, we can, we'll have a continuing funding source through that grant to meet our equipment, our equipment needs. So we can move some staff up to do that. And by doing so, we're able to acquire, or play to acquire, the equipment that's listed for auto tech, engineering, capa trade, and Taladon, about $134,000 worth. Just by way of what's going on also in our outside projects through the CTE, the project Habitat for Humanity is still going on, four residential units. We're also doing the renovation over at 16 Hill and Joey's Park in Belmont. We're constructing a steel structure that's a Joey's treaty that the welding students put together. In terms of educational technology, this is year three. The three priority areas in terms of where we need to try and get to for this part of five-year plan is the redundancy, the need for reliability throughout the system, standardization through our remote access, and as far as access goes, the implementation of Office 365, which will allow women to be extended beyond the school day. Operations support, in terms of building maintenance, we're running a pilot this year on our snow removal program. We haven't had that many opportunities to do snow like the doctor say, but on a few occasions where we have, we've saved money, we expect to save about 30 percent in our snow removal cost just by implementing utilization of equipment that we currently have already that we can deploy our staff to do snow removal. We're also looking to see if we can move out some of the network infrastructure type of cables and plugs type of work from the instructional technology department into the maintenance department, given that we work two shifts in the weekend and making some economies that we can gain of setting shift after that workload responsibility. We're looking to see if we add some additional funding to our contracted services to security that may provide some additional second shift staffing. And again, in fiscal 15, we made some reductions in terms of our FTE conditions, and we anticipate some additional staffing changes as we continue to go through administrative reorganization. Here's a summary of the fiscal 16 proposed budget. I think in administration, that reflects some of the staffing changes I owed to student services. The difference of $45,000 is anticipating the transportation contract, the $75,000 is same thing in the insurance is attributed to a reduction in our health insurance cost. And on net services, a $57,000 increase. The primary, the primary increase there is under our feasibility study, we're obligated to make a $60,000 principal payment for some short-term debt we have for the feasibility study project. Total increase is about $186,000 over fiscal 15. In terms of the revenue plan, as you can see, the assessment's going to be going up about $619,000. That's the 6 percent increase. And you can see the prior tuition is down about $548,000. Everything else is fairly consistent with the slide we looked at earlier regarding the In terms of capital repair, we committed about $276,000 for necessary building repairs and also some of the repairs to the site, the parking area, the access road. We currently have a study that's going on right now using Gail Associates, our greenhouse engineering consulting firm, looking at the access road and parking lot areas. We determined that we cannot do short-term patchwork on that work because there's considerable drainage and there's some wetlands-related issues, and there might be some undermining there. So rather than trying to patch this work, we're going to look at a long-term process. We're still waiting for the cost estimate on that, but we anticipate we may have to do it over a phased, phased period of time. We have some funding set aside for building repairs as necessary, as those will inevitably come up as they have this year. We'll continue to fund that as contingency. Some of the ongoing maintenance, we do have to rehab our fire alarm system. We have to change our emergency generators. We have to replace interior doors, and we're going to replace them for hallways for vehicle replacement. Water Culture has requested a 15-passenger van in order for them, in a trailer, in order for them to work on their job sites. It's been difficult even our current fleet to be able to accommodate all the students going to the job sites, as well as all the equipment. What has been happening is the equipment has been going into the, into our minibus vans, if you will. And what is happening is that it's inadvertently damaging and damaging the vans. It's just not very functional. So we're looking to see if we're going to use vans to meet that need. That'll take care of the water culture program, and the trailers will take care of the equipment needs. John, the tractor we're looking to purchase as well, that will also be used by Water Culture, but shared with building maintenance department because then we can use that for the snow removal operation as well. So we see some shared benefit from operations' point of view as well as the education program. And continuing to fund the stabilization account at $100,000 this year. You may know, when you're flipping through the budget book, we did work with the finance committee on trying to see if we could provide some additional information in the budget book. So towards the end of the book, you may see some supplemental financial pages regarding the revolving accounts, stabilization accounts, the assessment calculation, the revenue plan, things of that nature that you may find helpful. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
What we generally do next is have comments from the public regarding the budget. We have an open microphone over there for members of the public. Are there any members of the public who'd like to come up and make a comment on the presentation? Yes?
Could you, Jeff, I would like to hear from the finance committee, the follow-up.
Certainly.
endorsing or not endorsing the budget?
Very well. Chair of the FinCom.
Thank you for asking that. What I first actually wanted to say is, this was my first time reporting the nuts and bolts of developing the budget. So I can't really compare it to previous years, but it was a very good process. We especially appreciated the initial meeting where several other members of staff, not just Kevin and Ed, but several other members came and discussed the various components of the budget that they were working with. And what it meant to them in practice, that was, I think, really helpful. And we were able, I think, in the second round meetings to address our question in a much more informed way. And I think other members of the finance committee will want to speak to that as well. I also wanted to thank Kevin and his staff for being a sponsor to our suggestions about the way, not only just what was in the budget, but the way in which it is presented. And I think we will see differences in this year's budget from previous years.
Just a quick amplification. I will have a comment or a question that doesn't relate to the overall budget later, but I think the entire finance subcommittee really appreciated what we perceived as the discipline around operating expenses that the administration came out of the blocks with. I don't recall it exactly, but I think last year there was a 7 percent or so initial increase in operating expenses that was reduced to 5. Here, I think, and I forget what the original percent was, but the second iteration was less than 2, and they got it down to 1. They were very mindful of not sacrificing services, but also sensitive to our member count assessments. And so I think it really was a pretty painless process to go through the discussion within our finance subcommittee, in large part because of the discipline of the administration.
Did the FinCom endorse the budget? Did it mention that?
Yes, we endorse the budget. Yes.
So Mr. Manjares, do you have a comment you'd like to add to the public?
Actually, I have a question.
Well, the questions from us, we're going to take a vote on this later, and the appropriate time for questions to ask in our deliberation is when we bring up the item for a vote. So right now is primary time for public comment, and we're going to have our own discussion of this a little bit later.
My colleague from Dover with them, people asked a question.
Well, he said that the, he just mentioned that from a procedural point of view, the FinCom should probably have their two cents, so that's.
Mention of the vote we took was to recommend adoption of the budget that's presented.
So once again, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment during this session? Very good. Please state your name, your community, and turn on your microphone.
Marjorie Day from Concord. I thought it was very interesting, and I would like a little background. I thought, frankly, it seems commendable that there will be no spend assessment member count. That seems a real great, what occasion this?
To suggest that there will be no spend assessment is true. However, we're simply taking those costs and allocating them differently. What we were doing was, we were charging individual towns $1,500 per student to reflect the services that were being delivered. However, in working with DESE, which we have been a couple of years on this matter, they have advised us that it's typical in these types of assessment calculations that specialty costs ought not be segregated out, but rather be allocated as all of our other operating costs. So it's simply, reality, simply the methodology's changing. So rather than being built for each individual student requiring special education services, it should just based on the percentage of students that are sent to the district as the other operating assessment is.
Thank you. If I could comment on that as well, Kevin, I think in this presentation, you show 49.9 percent overall of the student body being involved in some kind of IUP special education program. At the finance committee level, we saw a further breakdown, which showed something like 60 percent of the students coming from in-district communities, much higher than for the out-of-district students. So if you look at that 60 percent, that's a majority of the students coming from our member districts are tapping into some kind, some level of special education services. And they're more and more being just incorporated into the way classes are taught. So I think it makes sense to say, you know, from one year to the next, it's going to change from one town to another. Just spreading that equally across the assessment to towns does make sense. In any given year, it may be a savings or perceived as an expense to a town depending on where they are in their percentage. But over time, it seems, it seems fair and reasonable, and it also complies with the suggestions of DESE, which is usually a good thing to do.
Any other public comments? You going to comment as a member of the public?
I'm going to sit over there.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Thanks.
Mr. Manjares. Do you name and your community, please?
Dave Manjares from Sudbury. As I looked at the budget book and the detail that I had, it was online. I know there's another budget book that came out tonight. Is that the same? This is basically the budget that I asked for last year to be levelled because we lost 50 students. And it was 798 last year. This year, it's 748 students. And I couldn't find any projection for enrollment going into FY16 with this budget that we're based on. So I'd have to assume that the enrollment's going to be another 748. We have level enrollment of staffing and teachers, and we have level staffing in staff. So we must be cutting it pretty cold, close, huh? Because if we lose another 50 students, we're going to have
Because if we lose another 50 students, we're going to have to. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the public budget hearing. Right a second. Very good, all in, all in favor of adjourn, ah, discussion, by the way, first. Nope. Very well, all in favor of adjourned meeting, very well. Unanimous, very good. I call to order the regular meeting of the Minuteman School Committee, January. And once again, do we get any public comment for the regular meeting? Seeing, public comment again, Mr. Manjares, go right ahead.
If I may. I just wanted to let you all know that I have the DVDs from previous meetings and they're available online and I'll be sending out a directory to everyone that points out certain events within those DVDs that I think should be of interest to everyone.
Any other public comments? Seeing none and seeing no student report, we move on to the chair's report. For chair's report, item A, Ms. Castagno could not be here this evening because of, for personal reasons. So, she had requested this item not be discussed tonight, so we will have that at a future meeting. Which brings us up to item 1B. Now, a little bit of background on this. A while back, I got an email from Mr. Manjares requesting videos of the meetings. We take, we do record the meeting on videotape. We usually, if somebody wants them, we have the ability to transfer them to DVD as and supply those DVDs. Now, when you ask for one or two, that would be kind of within the realm of okay as far as not requiring any sort of formal process, but then we got requests for more and more, which kind of bums up to more formal process. So, my recommendation was that, this is an issue that we discussed a long time ago, the issue of making our, our meetings, our exciting meetings available online. And the last time we discussed this a while ago, that sort of process of putting them online was somewhat more difficult than it is now back in the middle ages of, you know, eight years ago. So, now that process, to my understanding, is significantly easier. So, my recommendation was that the best way to, to do this, to bring us closer to what other communities, I guess, are doing, is to put our meeting videos online. That way, we don't have to keep creating DVDs. They can access it online, like many of our communities do. So, in that spirit, I'm going to offer a motion. If you were, just a motion.
I moved that the officers work with the administration, or is it? I moved that the officers work with the administration and the IT department to develop the proposed policy regarding placing Minuteman School Committee meeting videos online.
Okay, can I have a second on that, please? Second. So, I, I hope to make this process very, very, very quick, but there's a few issues that we have to work out. So, that's why we have this motion. So, I've been in contact with the IT department, in contact with the administration. I think it won't be hard to come up with a very simple policy of putting these videos online. So, I'm asking for, it's for the school committee if you want to go ahead with this, to go, yes, it's probably something that we should consider doing or at least discuss. Just as a note, that attempting to develop this policy, part of that development may be on trial basis, placing a single video online so we could go through all the, you know, procedure of doing so to make sure that everything works. Probably with the video from this meeting here. So, that's the motion and I open it to discussion. Mr. O'Connor.
So, the storage of video in a cloud service or even local services requires a fair amount of storage in order to archive that type of material. The average video of one hour or more is approximately 640 megabytes of quality. I don't know what our recording is, if it's in HD or if it's standard, but it is conceivable that we could rack up some serious storage costs in archiving more than a few hours of video. And again, I don't know what the budget would be or, or what the cost would be to meet that need. Has that been considered?
It has been considered and I'm in discussion with the IT department on that. And that's one reason why the proposal that I've been considering is something along the lines of that each full school committee meeting will go up within a week of the actual meeting and will leave online for two years. So, we wouldn't archive them indefinitely. If we were to archive them indefinitely, my understanding is that we would need a separate server to do so and then we'd run into expense. But I think that for a year or two, we can try this out without a lot of expenses, by my understanding, but that's one of the issues that requires a little bit further investigation so we can do the simplest possible. Mr. Manjares.
I don't know if I heard you correctly. Did you say you're going to do it moving forward from this date, from this meeting? Or are you going to go back at all?
I would, I, in the event that, I, I don't intend at this point, although that could of course be an amendment to when we finally have a policy. But to start this up, we would start probably this meeting as a trial and then move forward into the future. And then as we develop this policy and we see, you know, the cost of putting these things online, we can discuss how much we want, more money to keep online and what we want to put in the, archive any of the previous meetings online as well. You have to start somewhere, so to launch the process, I'd say start by just going forward. Ms. O'Connor.
I agree with Dave's concerns and I also agree with the perspective that you pointed out about a January 2015 meeting is an excellent place to start if you're going to develop any kind of an archive. So, I think that's a good one. I also was concerned as going back to Dave's point about the strain on the resources or the data retention and that it could potentially take resources away from the education of the students because we would have to fund this new function, which could potentially take something away from the IT budget that could be better used serving the students in this building. So, I mean, and I have a real concern about what are going to be the data costs and what are going to be the cost for the, the, the work hours that IT personnel will have to put into managing this resource.
My partial answer to that, and there will be a lot of other answers, is the cost, at least at first, will be zero or near zero. And the amount of time by the IT department will be significantly less because they no longer have to produce videos for people. Even if they're charging them, it's still a draining time. So, if they're putting them online, if the cost is nil or almost nil, then it seems to be a better solution. The only way to really figure any of this out is to move forward and give it a try. And since most of our communities, I think, already are putting, a lot of them are putting their videos online. And since my son knows how to stick, you know, a video up on YouTube in about three seconds, then I think it's probably possible for us to manage the process. Mr. Wise.
Not to be too cynical, I think this is mostly a form over substance issue. I don't think it hurts. I doubt there'll be a huge public demand for this. I think the actual, one of the largest demands might be of ourselves. While if we don't have an open, a remote participation policy, if we miss a meeting, we might be able to see it. So, I think that's beneficial. On the cost issue, we have a $19 million budget. We spend $8,000 a year on legal fees largely to defend ourselves against open meeting law complaints. I, I think that even if there's some marginal cost, even if there's not a huge hue and cry from the public, it is worth it to say we are doing everything possible to be as transparent and open and public as we can be.
Mr. Manjares.
Just a clarification, when you began speaking on the issue, you said you became concerned because the request was more than, for more than one or two or three at a time?
Well, in the past, we've never received a lot of requests for DVDs. I think that Ms. Rosan can speak to it, there has not been a lot. But actually, this has been an issue that has been on my mind, you know, since it last came up a long time ago. So, and since, I think that the, the other impetus is this is not just the request for DVDs, but what Jack said, for transparency, I think it's a good idea. In fact, when we first started videotaping, we had a discussion of it at that time. And at that time, I think it would have been fairly expensive to do it. Since then, nobody's brought it up. And now the cost of it, the difficulty of following way down, I think we had for it. So, it's, I think it has some merit on its own.
Well, my question still is, if I make a request for one or two past DVDs, is that going to be an issue?
I think that as you received the letter on, that, that we're going to be charging for them now based on public records request.
Would you be charging my board or squad money if they make the request?
Public records request.
You're going to charge them?
That'll be depending on, at the time, we'll take it one by one. I'm not the one who's making that decision right now. It's going to the administration.
Just asking for clarification. Thank you.
No, the comments bring it to vote. All in favor of motion at table. Passes unanimously. And Mr. Mahoney, you're going to be very busy tonight. Under five, superintendent's report. Kevin Mahoney for Ed McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of introductions to start out. I'd like to introduce interim principal, Jack Dillon. Jack's been the assistant here for nine years and he assumes the reins as the interim principal effective today. So, Jack, would you like to say a few words to the committee, please?
My first day was today. It was great. Happy to be here, happy to be in this position. I will say that over the past five or six years, I've been a finals or principal's job probably six or seven times. And coming down to the final two is exciting, but I will say that the process that happened here, and it does not so staff members that sat on that committee, probably the best, most professional committee that I've ever heard in the past. So, thank you to them. They represented you and the school very well and happy to be in the position and to be quite honest. You know, I'll do everything I can not to give it up, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'd also like to introduce our new director of outreach and development, Steve Sherritt. Steve, Steve has a wide and varied background in education. Steve was the, served as superintendent at Monty Tech. He was also an associate dean of academic services at UMass School of Law. And he's also had administrative positions at Bryan and Bedford, Go Tech. He, outside of education, also has some experience. He was a news director for a couple of radio stations. He's served as an elected official in a couple of communities. And he's also worked in city halls, an assistant to the mayor from Bedford. So, Steve brings a pretty deep background to the district and it's a pleasure for me to welcome him. Steve, did you want to say a few words or?
Just say I'm very happy to be here at Minuteman. I'm going to do my very best to make you proud of what I do and thank you for welcoming me.
Talk about how it relates to, 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 to. Yeah, we, certainly. You may recall last month, President Dutch, we announced that it was his final week on board here at Minuteman. So, we've defined Steve's position from broader to, more towards workforce development in dealing with our employees, working to try and create co-op opportunities. But also given Steve sees a communications background, but he fitted nicely in working with the human communications subcommittee, the regional agreement advocacy group, and handled the communications piece that Brendan did some work on for us as well. So, I think that we've expanded that role and pleased to have Steve with his background seems to fit that niche nicely. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that the interim principal handle items C and D. Works for me.
Passed out earlier. I know you probably had draft four of the calendar, but this is now draft five. I would not be shocked if you had another draft, but I think this is pretty close being finalized. The only change that I believe God draft versus the one that you have the hands is we originally were slated to start school on the 27th. We've now moved that to the 31st, which is a Monday in August. And our all-staff-in-service will be the same day as our new student orientation. It will take place after the students leave. It will be from 12:30 to 2:30. Leave everything else in draft four to draft five is the same.
You have a question from Mr. Wise.
Jack, I didn't compare this to the current year. I didn't trace the additions, but are there any other material changes in this calendar from the 14 slash 15 calendar that we're currently having?
I think the most significant change that we're looking at is in December of this year's calendar. You would notice, or you may know that we had the first few days before Christmas off for his next year's calendar. You'll see on the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, we're back to school, we're still in session. And then we'll have, of course, Thursday, the day before Christmas off. But that was the biggest change that we did. So, it's a little less of a, of a school vacation meeting, but the students will start a little bit later in August because later day is a little late this year. And of course, we're still keeping with Thanksgiving break starting on the 25th, which is the same as this year as well.
Another calendar question?
For you, I think. Jack, you mentioned that it may change again. Do we, I believe.
We're not voting yet.
Exactly. So, at some point, we vote.
As he said, there may be yet another change. Maybe they'll decide to let school end in, you know, March this year, or February 9th. There could be another change.
To be quite honest with you, I believe the only change that, that we'll see moving forward is the implementation of the MJS. That's our thing.
We're not voting. So, you also talked about the overall.
Sure. Passed out, passed out earlier, 2015 Massachusetts State FFA convention. Field trip. And there are a couple minor changes in your handout that you have. The original proposal was for a dozen students, 12 students going on this field trip. It's now 15 students that are going on this field trip. Rather than going through the whole itinerary, felt that would be more suitable to give you a copy of the two days, Monday, March 16th and Tuesday, March 17th. And you can definitely see on Monday, the 16th, that they're going right up until, well, almost midnight on that first day. And then on Tuesday, the 17th, they go until four o'clock. So, it's packed full of work for these guys. And they do a great job. Kids do a great job. And we look forward to some success in that.
So, would somebody like to move the requested field trip on page 70 of your packet with the distinction that there's now going to be 15 instead of 12 students? Mr. Luca, the second. Second, Mr. Spalding. Discussion. Cheryl, how did I know you were going to ask a question?
What question do you think I'm going to ask? Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Mahoney, is this trip planned in all accordance with district rules and regulations?
It is.
Thank you.
For the discussion. Mr. Horton.
Just a quick look at, just a quick look at the Monday schedule, it says dinner on your own. Do they have to travel outside of, going to town or out of the building? Or is it just the schedule that is on their own? I'm wondering if they, how they would get to there, if it's out of the hotel and building that they are?
I think they're going to have dinner provided within a certain vicinity of where they're at. But they can kind of do it on their own. I think there's a variety of different things they can do.
And I guess my question also is, how would they get there? There's any distance?
I think it's within walking distance.
Walking distance?
Yeah.
So would be within walking distance?
Yeah, we'll get them back on a bus and go in someplace.
Oh, the school bus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here we go, no more discussion, all in favor of motion on table. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Mr. Mahoney? Under item E, they have a status of regional agreement. This work is ongoing. Just in this month, we met with officials from Dover, providing financial information in decision options. We've also provided the same information to a working group in Lincoln that we met with to talk about their concerns. We met with the Superior Finance Committee last week to also provide a decisions options worksheet, as well as some financial analysis for their review. We've responded to questions from Foxborough, looking for some financial information as well. The Regional Agreement Advisory Group met last week. We provided copies of their minutes at your table this evening via reference. The superintendent gave the advocacy group an update on some of the contact that we've had with the communities, as I just mentioned. There still is a need for us to meet with Wayland, and to meet also with Belmont. I know that members of the advocacy group have been talking with the town administrator of Belmont, trying to arrange a meeting, I believe Belmont has their own working group that's looking into this matter. And I do know that I've had some conversations with the town administrator of Wayland. And they have moved forward to placing the amended regional agreement article on their warrant for town meeting, and will be looking to see if we can schedule to meet with those folks too. So, it's an ongoing process. We've tried to be consistent with the financial information we distributed relative to what the assessment would look like compared to the current assessment of 2015. If they were to go under the revised regional agreement as a member, or if they were to leave the district and come to Minuteman as a non-member. In some cases, we've had some communities ask for specific comparison of the same number of enrollment. Because in some cases, with the rolling average, the current enrollment and the rolling average enrollment is different. So, it was, some people felt as though that in order to have a physical comparison, we had to have equal enrollment. So we provided both the enrollment with the rolling average, and we provided the same enrollment under the member and non-member scenario. Some communities wanted to see what a 10-year average would look like. So we've tried to respond to what the communities are asking us, so that they can do their evaluations. And we'll continue to meet with local officials as we prepare for town meeting. We've been actively working with Lincoln, and trying to listen to their concerns. They have first on the town meeting scheduling. So we've been trying to commit a lot of time and attention to addressing their needs as well. So, that's our update. Item F? Item F was intended as a placeholder in the event that we had a draft or a proposed IMA to bring before the school committee. We haven't reached that point yet with any of the communities that we're talking with. I have no action on this item. Is that the end of the superintendent's report? Yes, it is. Mr. Menjares.
I was curious, how many non-member town representatives sending tuition students to Minuteman have been given the intermunicipal agreement with the capital charges?
We have not started discussions with the current non-members yet. We've been focusing our energy on members that are contemplating how they want to proceed on the regional agreement.
Do we have an idea with any reaction or any discussion? Zero discussion, they know nothing about it?
Just some preliminary conversation in the hour, where, and I think it's more of a waiting, waiting, and see what the district's going to do. So, it hasn't been active, but I think people are made aware of what our intentions are.
Thank you.
Ms. Flood?
Kevin, with respect to the recommendations that the commissioner was making, and it was sort of mentioned the capital charges for out of state, that sort of triggered my concern on that. I don't think we've gotten to the point where the board was actively voting to vote yet, but the state board. Do you know, or are you aware of any discussion that the board should lean in one or the other direction on that? I mean, it is much less important what we put into an agreement if it's being enforced at the state board in any case.
True, I do think that, I think that this is going to be considered by the board. I think it's scheduled for January 27th, maybe. So, I think the regulations will be considered. Hopefully, it will tie down soon enough, so we will help employ that conversation on the IMAs.
Thank you.
Ms. Mahoney?
To follow up with Carrie's question. The sped component, where your power, 40, 6,500, was it per student?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred. Is DESC, or, two questions. Would Minuteman consider that a negotiable term within the IMA? And have you heard any communication from DESC about whether they would allow us to make that a negotiable term within the IMA?
I'll answer it this way. On the same slide you were referring to about how what current community now, it's allowable now to be able to do that. So, I think that, I think that we have the ability to negotiate that. One of the regulations, it says that the school district may charge a special interest. The takeaway that I had from the local officials that met on the IMA development, there were two requirements in the agreement. First requirement is that it needs to be capital fee. And the second requirement is that it needs to be some preferred access or reservation of seats in the IMA for former members. Outside of that, any other terms and conditions are negotiable with that local school committee and with the Minuteman School Committee, subject to-
And DESC? And then DESC, where?
They, yes, it is within the conditions. Mr. Menjares?
It sounds like there's a group still working on the IMA?
No, that was the last meeting that we had, I believe you were present at as well. But that group hasn't been working.
So what we have is the last draft?
We have the last draft of the template. As these agreements become negotiated, they'll be brought before the school committee for ratification. So, some of the agreements, they have features that are different from other communities.
So, everything is negotiable, is what you're saying?
With the exception of the two items I mentioned before.
I'm sorry?
With the exception of the capital fee needs to be included in the interest of members that have left the district having an allocation of seats, available seats.
But, you'll be able to negotiate the sped fee?
Yes.
Only?
No, no. There'll be other issues that can be negotiated as well.
Well, then you are going to negotiate the capital fee?
No, that's not negotiable.
Okay. What are we going to negotiate?
What we're doing is we're meeting with the communities to find out what their concerns are, trying to comment, do they want to do it, or do they want to stay as a member or both stay as a non-member?
It's still working, huh?
Yes. Mr. Weiss?
Kevin, if I could just, Mr. I follow the entity or the group that's stipulated the two non-negotiable items that you just referred to, is who, this advocacy group? Who's the, who's the group that is?
No, it's not the advocacy group, it's a group of local officials that helped us develop the intermunicipal agreement. They met occasionally in Weston, and just provided input to the district. They, of course, are concerned about, it was primarily about a lot of folks that haven't yet adopted the regional agreement. So I think we tried to focus on listening to what their concerns were. I don't think that they were out of alignment with what some of the discussions we've had at this level. Now, I think that the next item is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Has anybody seen the Assistant Superintendent's Report? Mr. Mahoney, you're on again. Why don't we just call this Mr. Mahoney Show, this is a symphony. Well, we'll be hearing it for quite a while longer, I think. Mr. Mahoney, Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First on the agenda is, we're seeking two votes. The first vote is to approve the FY16 budget as presented. And the second vote is to approve the FY16 preliminary assessments as presented.
We'd like to put the first vote on table, Ms. Luca. Ms. Luca is moving to approve the FY16 budget, right, a second. Mr. Horton, for a good discussion. Mr. Menjares?
I'll ask my question again. Right now, in moments of Minuteman's 748, too. Can anybody verify that? You got the September preliminary numbers, that's still the number?
Where'd you get the data? I see from the budget book, 745 minus 62 if you're counting high school. Was that six something?
Yes.
745 if you count post-grad?
Post-grad and the A.M. program is.
So it's 745, everybody?
That's page 12, page 12 of the budget.
What is your question?
My question is, is 748 number still good? I mean, this says 2014, I'm here, I'm a little confused.
The information on page 12 is the most accurate.
Page 12. So it is 745, okay. And of those, it's 331. And how many of those are post-grads and payoffs?
It's 13, it's post-grads.
Thirteen post, how many?
And my question is-
Total body counts, they're not full-time equivalents, right? So, half-time count is 01 here.
Right. That's right, Jack. What we have is, for high school, for high school, we have the 745 minus the 62. I can give you that number in a second. High school's 688.
As my selectman was asking, if the numbers are correlation. My question is regarding the budget, and I must have missed it. There must be a projection as to how many students we're going to have in FY16? Are we just assuming we're going to have another 6, 745?
There is not a specific projection for fiscal 17 yet. We're basing it-
I'm not asking about, Sam was asking about 16.
16, we expect to see enrollment to decrease in fiscal 16, in total enrollment. We're expecting an increase in district enrollment.
Is there a number that you're projecting?
Not this time.
Budget-based time?
Not this time.
No number of students?
No.
Just a decrease?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Flood?
I'd like to point out that the budget book is on the Minuteman website. So the questions that our local officials have, maybe we can give them some last answer, but direct them to the website for the specific, and the kind of detail that packs it up.
Ms. Luca?
I just wanted to say that I was extremely impressed by Kevin's presentation. And also was aware that behind the scenes, the staff must have been greatly involved in this budget. I'm very grateful to them for that, but I also know the creativity and the incorporation of the new programming into planning, and with the foresight to improve a quarter person each or two different fields in the spring, so the planning can occur, and the continued teacher training that's included. I thought it was a really great interpretation of an educational budget. And it looks like a positive budget. I think that the town should be aware of the forward motion of the school in face of all the problems that it has had in the past few years, and the ongoing effort to renovate the building. The budget is a positive indication for the future of the school, in fact, thank you.
Mr. Horton?
I just wanted to point out that one of the aspects of the budget that we finance, I'm on the finance team, wanted to emphasize, the role of the school in the public was that even though the overall budget only increased by a very small amount, that the revenue, the assessments increased by a larger amount. And to make sure that the towns understood that, and we all understood that, because of the change in, changes in revenue or decrease in revenue. So, that would be a typical question, why are we going in very small percentage? Why are these assessments? I mean, it's because of the revenue plan, or the revenue side of the budget has increased. And I think that this budget, this budget book, and the expert explains that quite nicely. But we were very interested in having that as an aspect of the presentation, so people would know why.
Ms. Banks?
In response to sort of the comments that Mr. Menjares was raising, you know, I think it's also important, as we look at the staff committee, to reflect back on our own goals. And one of our goals as a school committee was to increase member-community enrollment. And that the administration has taken, undertaken a number of initiatives to make that happen. Now, of course, we're in the midst of those initiatives, and some were not started perhaps as early as we would have liked. So, so there is reason to be cautiously optimistic that we will be able to increase the member-town enrollments. But at the same time, it will also give us an opportunity next year to learn which initiatives have been successful, which need to be tweaked, and ways that we can help to better educate our member communities about the benefits of coming to the school and the opportunities that it offers. So, I think that the enrollment- So, I think that the enrollment over the next couple of years will probably be a very flexible number as we really try to make this transition to increase the member town enrollment and decrease the non-member town enrollment, and we're going to see that happen over the next couple of years.
Mr. Weiss?
I have two issues. One's a more narrow question, and Kevin, I only asked half of this question, I think, in trying to get related to the road repairs. In fact, I do recall asking to, just confirmation that whatever repairs are made are consistent with whatever configuration will be used going forward, and you answered that with the affirmative. What didn't occur to me until tonight is, I presume that the design and specification of those repairs are not going to be to standards that withstand heavy truck traffic? And are we foolishly spending money on something that we think will be repaired permanently that will end up getting chewed up if we do either a new building or a building renovation? And if you don't know the answer to that, I think it's a fair question, or something to ask the, just point out to the consultant, because it would be a shame to spend that money now and three years later have to redo the roads again.
We have had those conversations with the consulting engineer. They're well aware of the plan that we're moving forward with, with some of the new school options. In fact, we've already had communication between the civil engineers and the design team with our consulting engineer. So I think they're taking those back into consideration.
Kevin, then my second question is more broader, and again, I did not raise this any further, because I was focused on the overall budget, and I'm very comfortable with the overall budget, but we had more discussion and more highlight in these presentations about the transition to the new education plan and the additional staff of advanced manufacturing and multimedia engineering. I may have a different view than everybody else, but to me, the sequence of events that this committee went through was, we first approved the building of 628 without making real discussion about where that number came from. And then the education plan task force was charged with going and coming up with a program mix for that building. I don't know, or at least I certainly didn't assume, as part of that process, that we were approving changes in an educational plan that might be independent of a new building. And so I guess my only comment would be, I think it's great to be preparing for that transition if we have a building project, and I certainly hope that we do. But I think before we go spend that money and before we commit Minuteman to doing things like jettisoning welding in favor of multimedia engineering, we need to, if that's not related to a building project, we need to have a separate discussion here in the school committee, because I view the education plan as a component of the building project, and a lot of commitment of Minuteman independent of the building project.
I understand your comments. We had some of those comments internally as well. We thought that it was prudent to move forward with the plan as currently configured. We certainly wouldn't be committing those resources if we saw that the plan was going to change.
I just want to say something about, it was my understanding that this change in the knowledge picture really happened, inclusion of properties in the advanced manufacturing, metal fab, or what they're called.
Well, yes.
Were in large part dictated by state categories for approved Chapter 74 programs?
We're changing, we're changing the program to the advanced manufacturing and including the whole.
And I thought that welding itself was no longer Chapter 74?
Yeah, we're moving that.
I mean, so is it a jettisoning, is what I'm trying to say?
No, no, we made a conscious decision to eliminate a welding program in favor of advanced manufacturing. But a portion of that welding program is embedded in that advanced manufacturing, but welding and metal fab remains an approved Chapter 74 program that we have made a conscious effort to eliminate.
It's my, my understanding of this was that if you were going to move, if you're going to keep welding, we'd have to change to some extent anyways, like it would be under metal fabrication welding, but it wouldn't change as much as it will under advanced manufacturing. So I think that there's no doubt that, but we do have some flexibility under advanced manufacturing to expand that welding component as well.
In our press, yeah.
There's a lot of-
But they weren't doing that, I thought.
Well, it's, you know what, the devil here is going to be in the details, so when we actually, if we do move along to that program, then one thing that those of us who believe that welding is important will want to look at it very carefully to ensure that the welding component of that is as broad as we would like within that program. That's my understanding based on a conversation with Ed at one of our meetings. Mr. Spalding?
I've only been to one other career technical school that has advanced manufacturing. Surely there are others. But welding was a very strong component. As a matter of fact, it had its own-
Specialization.
Had its own space, and it was very much a part of the advanced manufacturing curriculum. And it's my understanding that's where we're seeing.
Mr. Tashak?
You noticed in Kevin's presentation, he hired two part-time teachers who will be working on curriculum next year in those particular areas, which is an indication that the questions you're asking here, number three, aren't quite handsome. There's some creativity that has to go into creating a curriculum which matches whatever the building is going to look like at that time. On another subject, I had a, just a brief chance to, if I had spoken this this afternoon and being at supper for a presentation, I want to come up with people who added, or had some of the planning information for the layout of the grant, it's a much clearer, nicer, nice work.
Ms. Menjerris?
I guess then I'm going to need some help, because the numbers that my people are looking at, the finance committee and the board of selectmen, they're looking at an increase of $130,000 year over year, and they see it in the context of just adding three students to the population here at Minuteman. So, I don't know, maybe I misunderstood my colleague on that, but should I tell my board of selectmen, my friend Tom, are they, this is a transition time, they're going to be more, or?
Mr. Weiss, would you like to try to answer that?
I, I think, Dave, there's two things, or at least my way of characterizing it is that the budget goes up less than a percent, but the average assessment for Minuteman communities in aggregate goes up six, primarily because we have less carried over prior to your position. In addition to that, if your town's enrollment went up three, aggregate member town enrollment went down, so your community now has a higher percentage of member town enrollment than it had this year. And so you're going to have a higher than six percent increase because you are now a higher percentage of aggregate Minuteman enrollment than you were a year ago. There are some other small drivers, but that's largely what, what it's attributable to.
And because what they're asking here is that under the biggest budget, they were paying around $25,000 per student, and that's going to go up significantly, isn't it?
Well, everybody's in aggregate goes up six percent, right? So that's, I mean, our average here is 24,000, so what's six percent of that? 1,200, thereabouts, 1,300. Yours will, the, the average may not go up per student, but your total assessment will go up because your three students now give you a higher percentage of the member town enrollment than you had last year.
Well, it just brings me back to what I was saying in public comment. In a sense, we have a reality here that we have less money coming in. Are we trying to spend more, or so we're going to take it out in assessments?
Ms. DeLuca?
There is kind of significant push in recent years to reduce the number of out-of-district students. And when you reduce the number of out-of-district students paying tuition, the operating costs are spread amongst the member towns more heavily, and power systems will go up. That is going to be true year after year, and it has to do with removing the reliance on the out-of-district students. You can't have it both ways. If you want to have fewer out-of-district students paying tuition, you're going to be paying more per student than member towns.
Ms. Menjerris?
I just look at it a little different. If you have less money and you spend less money, and you make adjustments to save your budget, or really have to be increasing the budget. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mahoney?
We have made combinations with the change in enrollment. I recall on slide 16, I talked to some of the changes that we made in our staffing. We've reduced our CTE staff that's currently working today in fiscal 15 by 1.5. It's important to note also that when you have a reduction of 40 or 50 students, as also was mentioned in the presentation, there's not a direct correlation between reduced expenses immediately with that drop in enrollment. There is some, but not to the level that I think you're expecting by virtue of the question, because those programs need to continue until such time as you begin to close them or those students are graduating.
Ms. Menjerris?
And my only reply to that would be that I'm seeing a typical 10 to 15 percent turnover in both teachers and staff, and apparently we're replacing everybody that's leaving, and that doesn't provide an opportunity, doesn't, doesn't that provide an opportunity to adjust expenditures?
As I mentioned, we have 1.5 in staff that, that we did not fill in fiscal 15, and we also had two and a half support staff that we, two of which we did not fill in fiscal 15.
Mr. Mahoney?
Does the absorption of the spend into the operating budget have any effect on these numbers?
To the extent that you send more than 50% of your students that require advanced services, you benefit. To the extent you pay less than 50% of your students, and not to see advanced services in any question.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, the spend costs are actually now showing up in the bottom line, as opposed to last year, we would, it was a separate column.
Correct.
And, and so it's reflected in the number, ultimate numbers here.
That's correct.
It's not free.
No further comment. We've been into the vote. The vote again, affirmative would be to approve the FY16 budget. All in favor of the motion at the table? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12. Twelve in favor, opposed, one opposed. The budget passes. Who would like to move to approve the FY16 preliminary assessments? And I stress the word preliminary. Would somebody like to make that motion? Mr. Spalding, because they're second.
Second.
Mr. Weiss, discussion on the preliminary assessments. Ms. DeLuca?
Can you go through the requirements with regard to whether or not you can increase or lower assessments after you vote preliminary assessments or hold?
Mr. Mahoney?
We're basing our assessments on a number of estimates, primarily the Chapter 70 funds to the extent that we have any change based upon information that we see from the state, we'll bring those assessments back to the, to the school committee for a vote, and we can reassess to the community, we'll reassess the communities as well.
Can we only go down?
Yes.
If, if we get a windfall in more revenue, we can lower the assessments. If we have a, a less Chapter 70 or less transportation fund, we were locked into the member town assessments and will have to find some sort of operating expense reduction in order to balance the budget.
Either that, or we can allocate use me and you.
This is current year tuition.
That's true.
I'm wondering if it may be proper to add a slight amendment to this motion, that we actually identify which rep is this one we're discussing tonight? Because I know that in Boxborough, it gets a little confusing moving forward.
It's page 42 of the budget book, I believe.
Correct.
That we're referring to, so that could be reflected in the motion.
So, so, right. Mr. Chair, would it be okay for me to make a friendly amendment?
I would say that it's already recorded in the motion.
Okay.
That informally.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Menjerris?
I just have a question about the tuition revolving accounts, and at this particular-
We're not, are we voting for tuition or not?
Just the-
No, this is only the assessments, this discussion.
We're just talking about revenue, it's a revenue source.
This discussion is only about-
It's a revenue source, sir.
It's only about the assessments, no longer about the budget or the revenue source. It's only the assessments as of page 42, Division 2. No further discussion. Bring it to the vote, all in favor of the motion? Twelve in favor, opposed, one opposed, no extensions. Item B.
On page nine of your packet, we provided a schedule of postgraduate tuition fees. We recommend an increase in all of our programs of fiscal 16. You'll see those, you'll see those recommendations listed on that schedule on page nine. We believe that our fees are lower than what we see comparative to the rates they're being charged to community colleges and other programs, and we think that there's a move for, to increase these rates. We review these with the finance subcommittee and recommend these fees to be included.
Page nine, page 9. Would somebody like to move the recommendations on page nine? Good, so moved by the second.
Second.
Mr. Weiss, discussion. Mr. Spalding?
Just looking at the advanced automotive, looking at dental system, those are huge jobs.
But what we're doing is on the advanced automotive, we're changing that from two years part-time to one year full-time, so that this is equivalent, it's the same amount basically.
Mr. Weiss?
Is she here?
Nobody told me! Kevin, are these changes driven by shortfalls, or is this just meeting the market so we can obtain additional revenue?
We're sensitive to trying to retain our enrollment and the impact it has on member assessments, it's a 50%. However, it's more market-driven based on overseeing from other programs.
Ms. Menjerris?
If I look at the assessments correctly, then we are receiving Chapter 78 for post-grad students.
That's correct.
As an FTE.
That's correct.
Which is about five or $6,000. And then we assess the member towns for that FTE in addition?
We assess the member towns 50% of the tuition for that, for that FTE, yes.
You don't, you don't charge them anything else?
We charge the student, the remaining 50%.
But they're included in the assessments, so right?
Yes.
As a body?
Yes, in other words, in the, in the foundation enrollment, the postgraduate students count, so they're, they're included in their, their provided contribution. In addition to that is the 50% of the $6,000.
And so we're gaining another $3,000, the school gives another $3,000 from the student.
To, that goes to the pro.
Mr. Weiss?
Dave, just a comment on that, because I think Kevin touched on it before. If you look at it just from a postgraduate perspective, you could say, gee, I'm collecting more revenue. But Kevin's comment that postgraduate students are factored into your required minimum contribution, which is based on the foundation budget. So we're actually paying, our, our member towns are getting assessed 16 plus, you know, 16,000 or so for postgraduate students. So the Chapter 70 money that we get from- So the Chapter 70 money that we get from those folks doesn't make up the true cost. And that's factored into each community's assessment before the rest of the operating expenses are assessed on a per-student basis.
Is it fair to say then that the school received $20,000 now as for each member of PG revenue?
No, it wouldn't be. I don't know what the percentage is, 80, would it get 80% on average of that $16,000?
Yeah, that would be about 8%, 85% on average.
So 16, does that include the tuition that the student pays to be post-grad?
That'd be in addition. That would be in addition.
So we're talking $16,000?
Roughly.
Roughly. But our district postgraduate students aren't going to pay?
Pay the $6,000, the rate, yeah, the $6,000.
So they're getting a good deal.
Well, those students are counting in the sending district's foundation enrollment. Those students are counting in the sending district's foundation budget enrollment.
Yeah, it's not our one.
Right.
We don't get any credit.
Ms. DeLuca.
My mind is going in circles. I'm going to have to wait a minute to come back to my question.
Okay.
I don't remember what it is. A couple of years ago, we increased the postgraduate tuition and we saw a corresponding, I believe, drop in enrollment. And I want to understand that, why we think that wouldn't happen again.
We were concerned about that as well. We talked a little bit about it. I think though, what's really driving it is we can't lie behind the market in terms of where our fees are.
Ms. Mahoney.
As to that and my previous question, I see Minuteman in a role of being an ambassador for mid-skilled jobs. So my concern is if we can provide quality education and get people into the workforce and there's not a budget shortfall that is causing this to be an imperative, why are we potentially pricing potential career members out simply because the market is dictating this increase?
Well, there are some fiscal implications that we have to absorb as well. Our costs are building up. Our post-grad accounting, you may recall, projected a deficit at the end of the year because the auditors wouldn't recognize fees that were collected intended to be applied to the post-grad program. So there are some fiscal issues that we need to deal with administratively as well. Plus, we do think that, you know, given some of the options out there, there's some upside. We're still not on the high end of the, the high end of the market.
Ms. Taylor.
I just want to ask what you're using as a market comparison because, you know, people who go to, say, automotive at Middlesex Community College are most likely getting, are eligible for Pell money and so they're paying significantly less usually than, and I know some of our programs are working toward Pell eligibility, but the outlook for students, and I think this might get at what Alice was talking about, here, right now is just a lot of cash more than you need to do at a community college. And so I'm not sure with the market comparison.
It is aligning with the, with the community college rate. So, you know, maintaining that percentage of what it costs for a community college versus what it costs to come here. I mean, talking to the constituency of 12 or so credits maybe at a community college level, we're charging what might be two credits. So I do think that, we think there is some capacity to increase them slightly without potentially impacting enrollment.
Mr. McGerris.
I may have misheard, it was last year, the year before, that we were losing some of our postgraduate enrollment because these for-profit schools and so forth and community colleges could offer some kind of grant money or tuition money. And I was pulling some of these PGs out of our programs. Is that still the case?
I don't know that to be the case. I do know that we're trying to get some of our programs certified so that we will be eligible for our programs as well.
It's not. It's just they're eligible for financial aid at those schools and not here yet. I thought you were working on it.
Right.
All in favor of the motion at the table. Eleven in favor, opposed, one opposed, extensions, one abstention. That motion passes. Item C.
Mr. Chairman, on page 10 of your packet, there is a memo from the executive director of the Mass Association of Regional Schools, Steve Henry. Maybe you know Steve, he was working doing this on the regional grid. There is a new statute that allows for the regional school district to set up a regional transportation reimbursement fund. And what this fund does, it allows proceeds received for regional transportation reimbursement, proceeds that are in excess of what was budgeted in the fiscal year, to be with the vote of the school committee, set aside in this reimbursement fund that can then be applied in the subsequent year to offset transportation assessments. The mechanics of how this all works is expected to be issued by DES. So I don't have any specific guidelines on it. The recommendation is to adopt, establish in the act to give the committee the option of utilizing the fund if such time deemed prudent. Given what we're seeing with regional transportation, 9C cuts, I'm not looking at a, I think we're probably pretty close to right on budget. I think that was, last time I looked at it, it was close to $75,000 or $8,000. But it is just another opportunity to establish a fund that may help us offset assessments in future years. We could save funds.
So you're asking for a motion to establish a regional transportation fund including the section 16C of Chapter 71 of MGL. Is that what you're referring for? We'd like to make that motion. Ms. DeLuca, do you move that?
Whatever.
Mr. Spalding, is there a second? Discussion. Mr. Weiss.
Kevin, I don't think we talked about this in the finance subcommittee. We did, it passed over the line. I guess a couple of questions. We have to use it within the fiscal, the next fiscal year. It's not clear to me on the surface what this accomplishes. Had we received more money or whatever, this is going to become the transportation equivalent of prior year tuition. It's going to have to be rolled in to our revenue plan the following year. So it wouldn't really be available to help us the following year to absorb a cut in the transportation money because it will already be monetized into the revenue plan. Unlike the stabilization fund, which is building up a kitty for big lumpy purchases, this transportation costs, they do vary year to year, but they're within a reasonably low number. Without this fund, if we had in excess of transportation revenue and we had revenue left over in our operating budget, it would just flow into E and D and it would be available for any purpose. So this seems to me to be more restrictive for no benefit and we seem to be rushing out ahead of the regulations where we don't even know what restrictions there might be. On its surface, it doesn't seem to accomplish anything to me. And I'm also concerned, even if it is, isn't, since we're not in a dire emergency, isn't the time to take this vote and have this discussion once we understand a little bit more what the implications are of setting up that fund? It seems like we're taking the vote before the ranks have even been prepared.
I think the intention was to get the discussion going. I don't think that the mechanics are going to, I could be wrong, but I'm speculating that the mechanics are not going to be so cumbersome that it's going to be, will change the intent of what we're discussing here tonight. I think it's transportation money being used and allocated in the subsequent year towards transportation. So you're using those funds for that purpose, towards that function. And I think it gives us a little bit more predictability in our transportation assessments. I hear your point, well taken, but I think that it just gives us another tool that we may want to use if we so choose.
So, Mr. Mahoney, is there something that has to be enacted?
At least you have Ms. Weiss.
Right.
He was actually...
Oh, Mr. Mahoney, sorry. I thought he was looking. Sorry.
I'll get my name tag out.
Is this something that we do need to take up right away or is it something that...
You're going to be televised.
I could be brought to the FinCon first.
I think that we have to agree with the regulations.
So my advice would be to bump it over to the FinCon since we're not in such a big hurry and let's just wait and move on. Ms. DeLuca.
I would say there's no harm in establishing such a thing if you fund it with $0, it doesn't make any difference. If a number of school committees have agreed to do it, you can actually go back and say, you know, here's a bunch of regional school districts who see this as a big issue, they have made this move. So, I mean, he's asking people to do it. I assume he has some reason for it.
Who's asking?
Mars.
Ah. So you, your opinion is that he's doing this to see if it's popular and if it's not popular, then this idea may not be worth it.
They've done a lot this past few weeks in Mars, Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. Steve refers himself as the man from Mars. They've done a lot with respect to, you know, teaching the Attorney General and trying to prevent the 9C cuts from happening. This is a perennial issue for regional school districts. It's a huge issue. It's the last remaining subsidy of the regional school districts put in place in 1947 to try to encourage regionalization and they very efficiently chopped away all of the other remaining supports as the only one left. And we thought it was protected and now it has been attacked. So, you know, I think, I think, you know, if Steve says, go, we need you to do this or we recommend if you do this, we should probably consider his recommendation. He's not saying fund it with $10. He's just saying make the fund available to yourselves. I don't know. I think if he asks us to do it, we should do it.
Ms. Mahoney.
Just a comment. I'm just a little concerned, I think this is a good intent. I'm just a little concerned, given the 9C communication that came down the pike, that this could potentially be another means for the state to back-end and chip away. Like hypothetically, we have $15,000 in fiscal 17 that we carry over into fiscal 18 into this fund. And then the state comes back, looks at our numbers for fiscal 18 and says, well, you know what, you're entitled to 23%, but we're going to go and we're going to create a sub-paragraph of that regulation that says that you're entitled to have that X percentage less what's sitting in your fund. And I'm just gun-shy after what happened at the end of, you know, last year. I'm just making that comment.
Ms. Flood.
I can actually see it working the other way around, that if the regional transportation reimbursement is going to be something that they feel like they can kick around and it goes up a little one year and down a little the next, this would be a vehicle we would have in our back pocket where we could do something to even it out. And so I think I'm in favor of creating the fund and a decision on whether to put money into it for one year or another is a different question.
Ms. DeLuca.
I'm going to board you with more history. I think it was 2004, someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, when a new sitting governor threw out the regional transportation fund entirely and the school districts were left having to fight for any regional transportation. Some school districts that are regional, big school districts in the western part of the state spent up to 17% of their budget on busing. So it's a giant issue for regional schools. It's the last thing for us to protect and I guess I hate myself, so I'd like to do that.
Mr. Weiss.
Just to Carrie's point, I guess I could see theoretically it serving more as a rainy day fund if it didn't have the speculation that you can only keep it for a fiscal year. If you can only keep it for a fiscal year, it has to be all spent, whether it's a large amount or a small amount, it's all going to be spent next year. And so it ceases to be a buffer in year two going forward and it just becomes like prior year tuition. You have to carry it over. And in that respect, I don't see what it gains us.
I'm going to, would somebody like to, well, we can either proceed with the vote or we could, I think that the FinCon needs to look at this one way or the other. So while we voted yes from now, before we put any money into it, we have to have a larger discussion on it. So I would, I would recommend that somebody move, just table it and send it over to the FinCon, let them discuss it and then bring it back to us if they think it's appropriate. So vote. Discussion of the vote to table. All in favor of the vote to table. Oh, I have to see if I can see, I have to slow count this one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, opposed, two opposed, one, and no abstentions. So that motion is going to the FinCon at their next meeting? Yes, sure.
I just want to know that we spend the staff or whatever timing.
The FinCon says bring it back to the next meeting. I'll bring it back to the next meeting. Whatever she feels. Well, almost whatever she feels.
Maybe we could at least have a status report. Yes, we could at least have a status report.
Item D.
There's a request from the Minuteman Retirement Board seeking the adoption of a local option under MGL Chapter 32, Section 20A, which indemnifies the members of the regional retirement board for any cost of damages regarding to civil action against them while conducting their businesses. As a retirement board member, this does not involve any actions relative to dishonest email pieces or any other potential violation. By adopting this, the retirement board members would be covered under our local officials' general liability policy.
Would somebody like to move the vote as written on item B? Ms. Flood, second. Ms. DeLuca's going first, she gets the honor of discussion. Mr. Weiss.
Just a comment, I think this is very straightforward. People who serve in a nonprofit capacity often have to be at risk for defending themselves against frivolous lawsuits and we are protected, as Kevin pointed out, for willful misconduct, gross negligence, all bad faith actions. So I think it's, from my perspective, an over.
Mr. Hart, just a quick addition, it did come before the finance committee, we support it. Support it. Ms. Mahoney.
There seems to be a typo in motion in the second line, members for cost of damages in civil against them. It should be civil actions.
Actions.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to go through a formal, legitimate process. All in favor of the motion at the table? Passes unanimously.
Final item, accept donations that you see from page P11. We have a donation of $22,000 from MGL monitors. The school committee will do votes accept.
Mr. Hart. Are they all working or...
They have been, they have been looked at by our head tech director and he's eager to utilize them.
Okay. So they're not going to use a pair of...
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of the motion at the table? Passes unanimously, so no amendments.
That concludes my reports.
Good. School building committee report. Mr. Mahoney? No, excuse me. Mr. Spalding.
I'm asking the vote, the school committee to vote to approve the recommendations set by Board of Selectment for Paul Lynch to serve as running member of the school building committee.
Move and motion and second, discussion. Move and motion in second, discussion. Mr. Spallman.
You've received a summary of his qualifications, a resume. I have not met Paul, but I'm told that he was an outstanding member of the school committee, which he did serve. He's also a member of the Subcommittee for Regional Educational Office Committee, and we do not have an attorney on the committee when we put together the qualifications, we didn't put attorney, but given the litigious atmosphere in this country and elsewhere, I am very pleased to see that he is an attorney, and he's also done construction disputes, so I agree with you.
Mr. Manjeros.
Yeah, I've just recently met Mr. Lynch, and I, I know him, I feel I know him quite well, so I think he'll fit right in.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion to table? Passes unanimously.
May I continue?
Absolutely.
You've all received an invitation to attend the February 2nd Building Committee meeting, and it's for informational purposes only, but we would really ask that you come, because at that meeting, we are going to have a couple of reports. One is you're gonna receive a, a report verbally, which you have received in print, from the non-MSPA Building Committee Plan Subcommittee. You'll have their report, which was sent out to you today by email, and we're also gonna have reports from the design team for new renovation, renovation slash new. It's important to note, for example, in the document you received today, it says draft. These things are gonna remain as drafts, we're not gonna be voting on them to approve them. The Subcommittee did send it to the Building Committee, but they're gonna be drafts, because we are gonna be taking them to the communities and asking for their input, their comments, their advice over the next two or three months. So, they remain as drafts, they're not final documents at all. But I think, I have not seen the design team's report or numbers, I will be doing that next week, I think it's next week, but you do have in your emails the agenda for our meeting and the non-MSPA Building Plan Subcommittee Report.
And we are gonna post this also as a school committee meeting, in the event that there's a quorum of members there, and considering the importance of this mission, of this meeting, I would hope that it would be quorumed.
I, I just also wanna add one other thing, that, you know, there's no reason for a long debate over any of these reports. What we're asking is, is for the community to have input, and we're asking, school committees obviously to have input, but we're gonna be asking for written input based on the information that's provided. That way, when the Building Committee meets to go over all the inputs to make their recommendations, school committee, they'll have it in written form, so we think that that's a better way to handle it.
And Ford, this is February 2nd at Minuteman at?
At 7:00 PM. We moved our Building Committee meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 to accommodate school committee members who may be more used to the 7:00 PM area, it'll be in this room. I will tell you that there was gonna be a meeting before that of the Building Committee Subcommittee and Communication, but happens to include all Building Committee members, so don't be shocked if you see the room as full when you come in.
Mr. Manjeros.
Can you tell us a little bit about the meeting on February 6th?
The meeting that we have scheduled on February 6th is the meeting of local officials, both elected and appointed, to basically talk about where we are with the regional agreement, where we are with the, with the building project. So, a lot of the information that we'll be discussing on February 2nd will also be discussed on February 6th.
And what time is that, so we can make sure that?
On February 6th.
Are school committee members invited to that, to you have the steps?
I believe an invite, an invite went out, so it was saved the date. Liz, what do you, what do you know about it?
I don't think the invitation to the school committee has been.
Traditionally, it has been all the school committee.
Yes, I would fully expect school committee.
I noticed today.
Mr. Spallman.
No, no notices have gone out, and I actually sent an email to the superintendent recommending the notices need to go out ASAP. I know in Dover, they know, because we met in Dover last week, the superintendent and I did, with the community leaders there, but we need to get that out. I think, as far as I know, everybody's included, invited, but I haven't.
I know the invitation went to the town administrators, but I don't think it's gone to anybody.
So, it has gone to the town administrators so far, but not to school committee members or other people, I think, yes.
Is, is that one of the meetings that would typically be 7:30, 8:00 in the morning?
7:30, I believe, is what we tend to be scheduled.
Okay. Does, does somebody here have the actual time?
It is 7:30. The invitation to the town administrator is 7:30.
Thank you. Can this be read on the screen?
Yes.
That's A.
A. A brush is still.
And is that the end of the building report?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Subcommittee reports, Mr. Mahoney, no, Mr. Horton. You're welcome to any of our meetings, so.
He was talking to the guy.
Mr. Mahoney wants to talk. Do you think people know your business, Kevin?
Yeah, I can't disclose that, several town meetings are.
And that's everything. Nice to have. Okay. There are two, two parts to our, to our presentation or our report tonight. One is to, one of our charges was to, to oversee the process that the superintendent undertaking in writing the progress report, sending the progress report, and if you recall in our last, in our December meetings, he gave us a copy of his progress report. I call that the abridged one, the longer one. Liz, do you know if the longer one, the unabridged version of Ed's report is online or what I'll call the abridged one, the longer backup information?
I'm not sure. I think there is one of them.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that. But if, if, looking at the minutes on page 15, it says that the superintendent presented, called attention to material table about the progress we needed to go, and there was a copy of what I'm calling the abridged version on the table, and it's available electronically upon request. So, I, I would hope that, I'd like to see the, the abridged, pardon, the unabridged version presented. This is the unabridged, so that was why I took, took the other one, like three quarters of it. But as, as of now, I do believe that the abridged version is, is online. But the committee, we met, we met in January 12th, but we, but we met with Jim Hardy from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, NASU field director, and so we did not talk to, we did not review the progress report with Ed. So, what we would like, what I'd like to do, we've been able to do, is if you have any comments about the progress report that you were given in December, please send those comments to Liz, and we'll collect any votes from Liz. But we do intend to meet, we could not do it on the 12th because of the agenda we had met. Any questions about that? Yes.
I think it's really important that this was an area that there was comments from the school committee last year, that the information that the superintendent gave us did not meet your needs, so it's really important, if this does not meet your needs, we need to hear that, so we can make sure that we make those corrections before an additional progress report comes out, so.
That's a good point.
So, silence in this means that you, the format is fine, unless we hear otherwise.
And the next report is due in March.
Right.
Any other comment or question? At our, at our, January 12th meeting, we met, as I said, we met with Jim Hardy, and Jim Hardy had looked over the, the data that we had collected prior to coming to our meeting, he had looked over, tried in the context, he looked over the data that we had generated, that the content's gonna keep up in name. But what he also did, he, he came up with another organization of the data, where he, he organized the by how members had rated each item, you know, in the seven categories, that in a strongly agree, agree, disagree, and don't know, so he sort of did a horizontal condition, if you wish, and that was a very useful way to analyze the data, because we could see, I have copies here that I'll, I think I'll give to Liz, Liz, you can put one online, so people could see that data. But it was very helpful to see where people really agreed on one item, or disagreed or whatever, that was very helpful to us. So, we, we, I would say that we have not finalized our, our recommendations from, from working with Mr. Hardy, who is very helpful, very useful, the service is great, as we are members of NAS. But, you know, we're sort of, like, let's say preliminary, preliminary decisions that we came to, or, or thoughts in our discussion. In one, from, looking at the data, and also, it's, it's very, sometimes it's difficult to isolate each item, and isolate an item, there are a lot of them intertwined, or had an impact on the other, so we, there were categories we came up with, that we looked at. One is, under conduct of meetings, a lot of things sort of fell under, not, when what we, how we were viewing that was, and how Mr. Hardy was viewing, was what, what were our agendas like? Did we have consent items? So, so at the end of our discussion with him, we, some items came up, such as, some members commented that the committee may not be spending enough time on, on some substantive topics, like strategic planning and fiscal management, student achievement, and the goals proposed by those constituencies in the schools who do so in the law. There's the school approval plan, there's the superintendent's goals, there's the school committee goals, there are goals everywhere, and trying to consolidate, not so much consolidate, but just one informing the other. So, he was, he, he, he offered to, to go online and look at our agendas for me, but it's not even about the criticism of meetings, it's not a question of that at all, because that wasn't any, any aspect of, of the conversation. But can we have, organize our meetings so that they're as efficient as possible, and we get to talk about the big topics that we'd like to talk about? We also understand that we're, a lot of our, our business this year, in the past few years, and will be next year, next couple of years, was the school building project and the adoption of the amended regional agreement, so maybe some, one of the possibility would be that we would, he would suggest we have an additional meeting during a month, during the month, with setting the purposes for, one meeting would be for a set of purposes, and the other meeting for a different set of purposes, but we'll see, then we'll see how it all comes out in the law, she might say. So, it's, it's still being discussed with him, he's doing some homework, looking at our agenda. A second area that we, we, we talked about the meeting was that, under, under governance, a lot of people disagreed that the committee regularly evaluates its progress relative to goals and objectives that they adopted. So, and that goes back to a little bit of what I said about all the different goals that are sort of floating around, I don't mean that in a sarcastic way, I think we're doing, you know, the better job this year of trying to integrate the superintendent's goals and school committee goals. But just to, to see, see how we can streamline that and integrate things, integrate that, also to, to talk about, under governance, I think he might, he could offer what he would term calls a protocol workshop, and topics include how information is shared between the officers and general membership, and the kind of pace each group is supposed to have with the other, and where it's about the roles, expectations, communication that we expect and need from one another. And the other, the, the, the third category that we sort of settled on in this past meeting, but as I say, it's still a work in progress, is, is, is talking back to, using that word again, about communication, we, we, there, we talked about a restraint among ourselves that we sometimes feel a little constrained by what information we can share with one another prior to meeting. Obviously, we can't have a discussion prior to meeting, but is there other kinds, other kinds of information that we can, that we can provide of this school committee? Because the, one of the areas that people checked off their, nine members felt, when they did, they disagree with this statement, never share pertinent information with each other to prevent surprises and promote informed decision-making. It wasn't just from members, but that, I know we talked about that, that some of the comments, people may refer to, maybe items we get from, from the administration, that, wow, this is a biggie, and we haven't talked about it before, and we're, we're being asked to make a decision or think it through tonight. So, as I, as our minutes will show, that it suggests that members in general like pertinent information from all constituencies and sources in the country, not just from ourselves, but from the, from the, from the administration as well. And that is, let me just show up the comments on the, on the self-evaluations that we filled out. So, I, I think we would have, and also, what he was doing, he said, you notice that a few items which are really, that we could handle, that could be handled just as, just by saying, here's what they really mean. For instance, one was, a lot of people noted that school committee felt about, not, the school committee had not adopted or adopted a mission statement, and what he said was that mission statements, school committees typically don't have mission statements, it's the, the school committee's mission statement is the school's, or the district's mission statement, and of course, Minuteman has been looking over the, 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 large pattern down in the budget, I guess, it's called. So, if, if, so he would, if he, if there are other areas which could be clarified, clarified in a simple manner, we would do that as well, but that was gonna be pointed out. So, I would invite you all to, again, say, if you have a particular focus you'd like us to, to look at, send that to Liz, and we'll cooperate, that, well, that we, we can take all the data and. The, what, this would also, as, as Nancy reminds me, that in order to accomplish some of these goals, or some of these issues, let's say, resolve them, make them better, it would involve some sort of in-service from, from NASC, who's proven to be a very good resource. Doesn't necessarily mean we have, we would request or ask for, but could, that doesn't necessarily mean that we would, we would request a special school committee meeting in order, because in fact, we talked to him about how much time you think Ed's would take, and whatever, he gave us some ballpark figures. So, we're still looking at the data and using Jim Hardy from NASC to help us understand it and to come up with some action plans to break that in school. So, Dave, would it be fair to say that you're gonna continue to work with him, and you're gonna come up with concrete proposals in those three areas, which were the ones most identified in the comments, on how we should improve in moving forward, and some of these things could include workshops along with run by some people? Do you know what kind of timeframe you're gonna have a proposal, specific proposal for us on this? Well, we, I think our next meeting, I'm hoping we have it on, on the date, is on the 3rd of February, so maybe by February, I can talk to Jim. So, February, March meeting, you're gonna bring a specific proposal for us to vote on, and how to move forward with these, in these three specific areas? Or something, or as, as we discuss it, continue to discuss something else, or? But these are the areas that were most pointed out, but gentlemen from the NASC, I've been looking at our report, and Mr. Manjeros. Ms. Manjares?
Did I miss the words, responsibility and accountability in that presentation? Are they gonna be part of the proposals coming back and is accountable and responsible for these goals?
No, no.
No?
I don't think I used those terms there. Maybe something like that. It's really, the action plan really would talk about educating us as opposed to necessarily saying who's gonna be doing what. Although I think we did talk about, when you're talking about action plans for the school committee was of who I, who I, where, when, how, that sort of. But I'm not sure exactly what the form would look like from our side. So you said responsibly and accountable. I'll jot it down, but I'm not sure if that's.
Accountability and responsibility.
Is that in your report? Yes, thank you. So we'll be hearing more on this in the near future. Yes, okay, thank you very much. No, Ms. Banks, secretary's report.
I got her name right. The, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes. We received several minor corrections from David Horton and which have been incorporated our, and so I would ask people for the minutes. Is there a motion? David?
Motion and second.
Any discussion? All in favor? If you raise your hands. Any, you do note that, there are abstentions. I know this too. And anybody who is not going to vote in favor? And, right, just to address what left.
Does that conclude the secretary's report? Now, by accident, we have finished early tonight. All in motion. Hey, hey, you know, don't hurt, you know it's not.
Do we have to have a motion to leave early? I mean, we have to have a motion.
Motion, quartet. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that it was a pretty positive publicity that was.
Oh, yes, yes.
Weekend, that is our table. And there at the table, I encourage you to read the.
All in favor of adjourning? Thank you very much.
And spread them like the new earth.
And I expect you.